Let's call a meeting to order. I think we're all here for this. Item two. At the Commissioner's request, discuss any item of concern on the regular session agenda of June the 6th, 2017.
Mayor, I've got a couple of items on the claims list that I'd like to get a little information about. And Fund 10, under Tech Services.
Could you just pull up the claims list?
We bought 1,650 gallons of paint. And I'm just curious what we're gonna paint with 1,650 gallons of paint.
Let me pull up and see which department was paying for it. It said how many gallons of paint?
Tech Services. 600, 1,650 gallons.
Yeah, street paint. We've been painting lots of streets, Commissioner.
Talking about striping? Striping paint, is that what that is?
Special glitter paint.
Okay.
So despite, I think most people have seen the street painting machine now, or at least the people that were convinced that maybe we didn't have one. But we do have one now, and it's been out busy. So I didn't realize we'd been using that much paint, but I know we're using a lot.
Under Fund 40, under capital improvements, Meridian Contracting, Inc., we had professional services there of $249,988.70. And I was just curious to what project that was.
It's a contract for the roof bridge, I believe. Professional services probably not the right title for that, I don't think. That's a contract for...
No, it's not. It should be a construction contract for the roof bridge decking.
Okay.
So we can take a look into that and get that corrected.
Oh, no, I was just curious about what it was for. I wasn't concerned about how it was listed, but that's part of the... How's that project coming along?
Pretty good. I think it's very close to being open.
Think you might open it up again here before long?
Yeah, we think we're doing pretty good. The schedule's looking fairly good, and I'm expecting it to open up in July as scheduled.
Good, good. One other item under the Stormwater Fund, we had Beverages Construction Company for professional services an amount of $65,512. And I was just curious about what that item was.
Again, that's construction work.
That's excavating Cherokee.
I can just pull it up. Professional services.
That's excavation of Cherokee detention.
Cherokee contention.
Detention. That's behind the funded dealership.
Wow, okay. It's actual construction work. They're digging a hole. They're digging it deeper.
Okay. All right, that's all I was interested in. Thank you. Anyone else?
Item three, discuss Call Lake Phase Two update. Chris?
Okay. I'm gonna provide a little update here for the program. As you know, we've been doing quite a bit of work on it. The things that we'll cover is we'll cover a little bit on the program and the infrastructure updates. We'll take a look at some of the decisions that we have coming in the near future. And we'll also go back and take a look at the demand analysis. But first, what I'd like to do is I'd like to bring those who are new to the council, introduce this slide to you. This slide was generated by Guernsey in our water master plan. It was generated in, they started in '09, finished it in '10, updated again in '14. What we have here is when they originally started, they were projecting demands up in this area. And this is kind of a timeline set of graphs. And then roughly in this area here, which would've been in, you know, 2010, 2011 is when we really hit our peak demand. In one summer day, we used 21 million gallons of water. And it was this information here, and when you project out, that got us to really thinking about how are we gonna address our future water demand? And how are we gonna find that supply? And as time goes on, after we hit that real peak one, you'll recall we did some conservation measures, and that really dropped off the demand. And at the last time this slide was updated, they were projecting that coke would come off and start using the reuse water, which would drop them down to about a million a day average potable. The rest would be made up with reuse water. And then they projected in, in the event that that didn't happen here with two, we were looking at a canola plant with a possible another canola plant. Each of those are half a million a day. And if they did all come to fruition, that we'd be down in here, and that would be the demand curve. This demand curve is based on population growth and 2 million gallons a day for industrial growth. That's it. That's all there is in it. This was, at the time, Guernsey's projection on what they thought the sustainable yield of the well field was. That's not to be confused with OWRB's equal proportional share. When they do the science and publish their report, we'll have a different number here. We asked Michael, as he went through the Phase One, to go back and look at this and the information that they built that from, and they projected that down at six. So this is where we started, and we made our initial design to this line right here, the top line. So towards the end of the presentation, we'll come back to this slide, and then we'll talk about what's happened since the last time this slide was updated, and we'll show you where we're projecting demands to be.
Has that slide ever been updated?
This one was last updated in 2014. I have an update that Morale did that he'll show you tonight that was updated in 2017.
Good.
Okay?
Good.
Okay. Michael?
Thank you, Chris. Just real quickly to give you a program status update, we've had some very good progress on preliminary design of all the major infrastructure pieces, from the intake and its pump station all the way through the drinking water, surface water treatment facility. Geotechnical investigations are approximately 5% complete to date. That's a little bit behind schedule. Some of the rationale for that, most of the rationale for that can be looked at from a weather standpoint. We have had quite a bit of rain during the early part of this phase, and that has impacted our ability to get on site without doing some major damage to not only private property, but some of the core property. In fact, some of the core property near the intake is not even accessible due to the high elevations of the water supply there at Call Lake. We've also been trying to be mindful of crop yields and trying to be good neighbors and not have negative impacts on landowner crop production. And then just the ongoing cultural resource evaluations that we're doing as part of the environmental work. However, we are prepared for these type of issues within this program, when there are issues that impact our schedule, how flexible are we able to adjust and maintain our overall deliverable schedule. We are currently consuming some of the scheduled contingency, which from a scheduling term we call float. That was built in to the original deliverable schedule, and so I'm very glad to report to you today that as of now, you should not expect any delays in anything that we're supposed to provide you relative to Phase Two. But I did wanna bring it to your attention. If we continue to have more wet weather and it impacts our ability to get in and access those sites, we have other avenues by which to adjust the program to continue to meet schedule, and we'll talk to you about those when those issues, if those issues do occur. We are continuing with the environmental process, the NEPA process with the Army Corps of Engineers. We had two very well-attended public meetings, one in Enid on April 11th and one in Ponca City on April 13th. The goal there was to try to reach as many people as possible on both ends of the program, both ends of the project. Very happy with the turnout we received there and collected some, quite a few verbal comments as well as written comments, all of which will be documented and available for review in that NEPA document once it is complete. We also recently, in an effort to engage the Corps of Engineers and keep them involved, they are the lead agency responsible for overseeing the environmental work, and obviously they will be the agency that issues us a permit to construct the intake ultimately within that reservoir. I had a very productive meeting with them on Friday of last week, and members of your staff as well. And then there are multiple ongoing program controls, reporting, scheduling, task assignments that are done kind of behind the scenes on an ongoing basis. Real quickly, just an infrastructure update on a couple of pieces of the major infrastructure. Those of you that are new to the council, we have kind of four or five main components here or elements of infrastructure that we're working on. I'll point those out for you real quick. This is a conceptual 3D rendering of an intake pump station at Call Lake. If you've got really good eyes, you can see the intake piping underneath the surface of the water there. That will connect to a pipeline approximately 70 miles from Call Lake to the city of Enid. Along the way, there will be a booster pump station to help address some hydraulic issues at higher flows. The lake, or the raw water from the lake will terminate in a terminal storage reservoir, two of those that are planned, one for emergency storage of about 10 to 14 days of water supply, and one as a balancing reservoir, which will be located at the water treatment plant. And then finally, we have the water treatment plant itself, which is something new to the staff of the city of Enid and the citizens of the city of Enid, and the fact that you have to treat surface water now as opposed to groundwater, which you've become accustomed to. So those are the major pieces or major elements of infrastructure that we're working toward a 30% design on in this phase. Quick update on the intake piece. The cultural resource survey is part of the environmental work, is 100% complete. The biological field work, also associated with the environmental work, is 100% complete. And we have prepared a draft preliminary design report and submitted that to your staff in early May. They are currently reviewing that document and will be collecting their comments and input and revising that document accordingly, along with the supplemental geotechnical information that we get to revise that report once we're able to get out to the lakeside and do the drilling.
Does that include the information from the design and biological work in that?
The preliminary design report will not. The biological field work and the cultural resource survey work will be in the NEPA document, the accompanying environmental document associated with the design work.
Is there anything important for the commission to know out of the results of that work at this point?
It's a very important first step to identify what cultural resources or biological resources may be impacting construction or have the potential to impact construction, and if they do, then we have to modify our construction plan and therefore our design. And so with that work as the first step and that work 100% complete, to date, we have not found anything environmentally that would preclude us from continuing with our preliminary design.
Such as?
A, an old cemetery burial ground that might not have been properly identified in our desktop recon that we did in Phase One. They've actually went out into the field now, and they would've had an opportunity to stumble on that and identify that from their field work. That could have caused us to redirect the location of the pipeline.
No endangered species, that kind of thing?
Like a parrot, a chicken.
Michael, will the report show how many people attended the meeting in Enid and the meeting in Ponca City?
It will show how many people signed in. We were trying to keep a good count on that as people were coming in and out, but it got a little busy. There was, by our estimates, over 100 people at the Enid meeting and about 70, 60, 60 or 70, 60 folks in the Ponca City. The number will be lower than that for those that actually agreed to sign in. With regard to the pipeline, preliminary design is ongoing. Biological field surveys are approximately 45% complete on the pipeline. And the boundary survey, as well as the geotechnical investigations, are set to begin this month. In fact, we had a meeting with our geotechnical folks today, looking for ways again to accelerate schedule for the drilling of those bores.
Does somebody actually walk that whole pipeline distance?
Well, that's a great segue, Commissioner. The next slide is an update on the pedestrian survey, which, yes, there are people that have actually walked the corridor. Remember, in Phase One, we identified a quarter-mile-wide corridor for this 65 to 70-mile-long pipeline. Well, now they have actually went out there and done more due diligence beyond what an aerial photo can tell us about that corridor. We have, just for presentation's sake, we have broke this up into three different pipeline segments, starting at the bottom left with the western segment. The pedestrian survey, the walking, identifying of structures, major issues of concern that may change the design, is 100% complete, and that encompassed a little over 20 miles. The central section of that pedestrian survey is 100% complete, almost 25 miles. And the eastern section is about 50% complete, and it's a little over 21 miles.
You get to do any of that walking?
I have not got the pleasure of doing that yet.
Do people have to walk?
They won't let me.
Did some of the people have to walk in mud?
Yes, yes, they have. And we're only, you know, we're only able to actually get on property where people have given us authorization to get on property, so that kind of has some impacts as well. But so far, it's been, it's been pretty, people have been pretty responsive. Infrastructure update with regards to the water treatment plant, again, from an environmental standpoint, the cultural resources survey and the biological field work is 100% complete. We have had a very productive meeting with the Department of Environmental Quality. They were in favor of the treatment processes that we were moving forward with. We got a really good positive nod from those guys that your program is moving in the right direction from a surface water treatment standpoint. We have issued a number of design memorandums. These are sort of precludes to the preliminary design report. It allows us to engage your city staff, as well as some of our technical resources, in determining, in a lot greater detail than we did in Phase One, how these treatment processes will interact with each other and what operations and maintenance components each will have and how they impact the staff. We've completed four or five of those to date, and they're listed here, the ozone process, the floculation sedimentation process, granular media process, and the granular activated carbon process. These are coming out on a monthly basis, so the folks in engineering and the folks in public works and utilities are very busy and hopefully not overloaded with design memorandums, because we really want them to have an active role in the project as it moves forward.
Michael, how many gallons can that treatment center have on a daily basis?
It's designed, it's conceptualized now for 21 million gallons for a max day. 21 million gallons a day.
Per day?
Yep.
Through a facility that's small?
Mm-hmm. That's just a, that is not your facility. That is just a, that is a graphic to let you know I'm talking about a treatment plant.
Okay.
That's not, that does not relate to yours at all. Good question.
Then you'll have the graphics as well.
Mm-hmm. But with regard to your facility, this is an aerial overview of the site layout. Again, the operations, the future operations staff, the public works, utilities, and engineering staff have had an opportunity to provide a lot of input into this, and this is still subject to change a little bit, but overall, the concept is that the terminal, this is Chestnut right here. This is your existing groundwater storage and groundwater pump station. The concept is that we'll have the large storage basins kind of off the road, back in the back, behind the upfront facilities and buildings and treatment structures. Closer, they'll be closer to the Chestnut, the visual aspect of Chestnut. And these are laid out somewhat strategically. I won't go through a lot of detail, but as the water flows through the plant, Process A, Process B, Process C, they come in order, and it's kind of laid out in that fashion as well.
Where is the big treatment facility? Is that the one that gets to the right of the?
Yeah, right in this area, right here.
Is that the, not the treatment, but the, where we store most of the capacity of water?
Yes, that's correct. The finished water, that's right. The treatment units themselves, some of which are indoors, some of which are outdoors. And all of that, again, is getting fairly close to nailed down. And we really like the layout of this site, but it is subject to change as we get through this process.
How many acres did we buy there?
We ended up with, including what you have, about 20, right?
80?
80.
80.
20. Yeah, the TSR is 20, I'm sorry. This is about 20 here. The facility will also have an administration building that will house laboratory facilities, office space, meeting space, storage space, non-treatment spaces, okay, non-treatment processes. And one of the things that our team is working on in cooperation with your staff is kind of the layout of that, just for sake, for this purpose, called an administration building for the water treatment plant site. We've looked at several different layouts. This is not a floor plan. This is just kind of showing synergies of how things are connected to each other within that facility. And I know you can't read those, but the concept is that this is Chestnut up here, north of the facility, and it's in an L shape with a public access component located here. You know, this is, this is an area where you may allow people to come in and greet them if they want to tour the facility, if you want to have a meeting at the water treatment plant. Those kind of, those kind of aspects are associated with the architectural design of that area of the L shape. And we also thought it was important that there be some type of a security barrier so that general public access could only go so far without getting into the control systems and the laboratory and those kind of things. And so there's a security element that's not really reflected here as well, just because of the level of detail required to reflect it. Lastly, with regard to infrastructure, we haven't talked about this probably enough, but I just wanted to point out that there's a lot of quality control and quality assurance that goes into a program of this magnitude. And I put together this graphic to try to give you guys some sense of the level of that quality oversight that's occurring on your behalf. So right now, we're in the process of submitting these draft PDRs, these draft preliminary design reports. What happens before the city gets that is it goes through what we call a cross-discipline review internally within Garver. And so when a structural engineer has a component of that preliminary design report that they're responsible for, they not only have senior structural people that review that, but it's also important for the electrical engineers to review that as well, because electrical will be penetrating some of those structures with electrical conduit, power, light, and so forth. So we have a cross-discipline review check. In addition to that, we have a technical review committee. Now, these are, these are people that are very senior in regards to a program of this magnitude, whether it be pumping, piping, or treatment, but have not been involved in your program. They're Garver staff, but they have not been involved in your program. And that's by design, because we want them to come in and be able to take a fresh look at what your program team has developed and try to find weaknesses in that development. And so that technical review committee finishes their review. We get the comments back from all those folks. We address the comments, and then we send it, accept it, and then we send it to your city staff for review. So just wanted you guys to know that that's ongoing, and that's, again, part of that program controls and oversight that I mentioned on the first slide. This is a brief overview, a high-level overview of the integrated program schedule. Couple of things we need to be thinking about. When I presented to you in March, we talked a little bit about taking a site for the intermediate booster pump station. This is about three-quarters of the way between Call and Enid, on its way to Enid, where we lift the water and add a little bit of pressure to get it over to, get it all the way to town. This is continuing to slide as we try to find agreeable property owners to site this pump station to date. It has not impacted our ability to deliver what we're supposed to deliver within the schedule that we've signed up to deliver it. But as this continues to move, it will continue to consume some scheduled float, and we will need to zero in on where that's going to be for us to finish our deliverables to the city. The other one that's coming up, again, related to private property, is the location of the emergency terminal storage reservoir. This is the 10 to 14-day supply that's located not on the water plant site, but somewhere up on the pipeline closer to Enid. We have an August 15 decision deadline there. Again, that's to facilitate us so that we can continue the preliminary design of that structure, that piece of infrastructure, and meet our delivery schedule. So no major concern for alarm, but I do wanna stress the importance that at some point we need to, we need to zero down where those are gonna be.
Michael, does any of that take into consideration, security?
It will take into consideration, security.
Do different municipalities handle security different? You know, all of our water's gonna be coming in from the west and Call Lake.
Yeah, they do.
To the same point.
They do. They do handle security different. And we're, we had a controls workshop with your staff recently where we talked about levels of security and what we want to monitor, what we want to be notified of. Do we want to use video capabilities? All those kind of things to have eyes on the infrastructure as much as possible and notification of some security breach as quickly as possible. And yes, different, cities do handle it different. Some are more concerned about it than others. I think, I think everybody's concerned about it. It's just a means to be able to provide a certain level of armoring, whether it be physical armoring or technological armoring of their infrastructure to secure it.
Michael?
Yes, sir.
Do you have a way to detect contaminated water before it goes into the intake?
Contaminated is a broad term, and there's a lot of things that can be in our water. And it's difficult to scan for everything.
If someone was to intentionally poison the water?
Yeah. We do have online sensors that are being discussed at the intake pump station right now. The only other access to the water besides the lake will be armored with the security measures that we just discussed with the mayor. But there are online sensors that can help identify that there has been a change in water quality. We may not be able to identify what that contaminant is with that, with that meter, but we will notify, we will be notified that there's been a change, which is a cause for potential concern or investigation. I hate to say concern. It could just be a condition that the lake is going through at the time.
So if it was intentional, someone was trying to do the public some harm, it would get into the system. Is there a way to be able to purify it before it got to the plant to where it wouldn't do so much damage?
Actually, that's part of what the plant's for. You know, once it got to the plant, then it would undergo rigorous treatment processes, oxidation, filtration, the carbon filtration, oxidation from the ozone is, that's what a lot of high purity water folks use for, you know, addressing contaminants like that. Now, it's not specifically targeting some poison. It's targeting the Safe Drinking Water Act and what's involved there. But yeah, you have a very large number of tools in your tool belt once the water gets to the water treatment.
To me, we put a lot of faith in what you're doing with the security. There are a few people probably need to know that. You don't want to rely on the security.
Right. And we probably won't talk about that a whole lot, other than with your staff, and certainly want to meet with you guys if you're interested in those levels of security, but a very important component of the program.
One more question?
Yes, sir.
How deep are the pipes laid in the ground? Are they different?
Yeah, in most cases where we're open cutting, they'll maybe six to 10 feet deep. In other areas where we're boring a stream or river crossing, it could be much deeper than that.
How much cover on top? I think we put that up in public media.
Four to five feet is what we're calling.
Four to five feet of cover on top. You know, security is a very good point, I think, and I know it's something that we're all taking into consideration. Security at the point that we put the treated water back in the distribution system will obviously be very important as well, maybe even more important.
Is Phase Two gonna end in January?
The 30% design and the preliminary design deliverables do, and then recall that we update the cost opinion at that time, when this 30% design is complete. And then if adjustments need to be made from a cost standpoint, then we have the last three months through the spring of 2018 to phase down or phase out or delay infrastructure to bring the project closer to the budget that you're looking for.
So the answer is basically it will end in January unless there has to be some change this way.
Phase Two is $15 million, is that?
14.1, or 14.3. And, yeah, close enough. And we bring this information forward so you know when there's things that aren't getting done quite on time. And there's a purpose for that, so you know if we do run into that problem, it won't be the first time you heard about it. You'll know long before it hits the end of the year. We'll be up here talking about it if something has to change. Any other questions?
I think it's real nice that you're having to deal with mud over around Call Lake. But it doesn't matter where, what lake you're on. In the state of Oklahoma, you've got a mud problem today. But that will change, probably in 15 to 90 days.
Means the lake's full, right? That's a good thing, right?
Most of them are above normal.
Out of curiosity, what's the staffing like at these facilities? What type of numbers are we looking at as far as individuals having to work to keep it going?
It's a great question, and I know something that Gerald's been very, very interested in as well. When we get to that January timeframe, we will have
When we get to that, that January timeframe, we will have completed the more in-depth operations and maintenance cost analysis. There are several things that go into operations and maintenance costs, but one of which, one of the big three really is staffing and personnel. And so we're working with, with your staff right now to figure out, to present to them what, what we, what is normal, what we think is normal for these type of facilities and then collect feedback from them on how much automation is, is acceptable to, to change those staffing levels and so forth. So that, that will be presented as part of our, part of our work on this, in this phase. Yeah, they're, they're not just driving away and then coming back with an answer. We talk about this twice a month and several other times during informal meetings and then other times over the phone. So this is not a surprise to anybody. When it gets here, we'll, we'll have had our input. And we really count on the ability to work with, with Michael's staff, with Lou and I and our staffs to talk with them and work through all those processes and all those ideas and how can we make it easier to operate and reduce maintenance? So when we get to the end of this phase, we know what that answer is and we agree with that answer.
Are you familiar with what Stillwater does?
Personally, no. Lou's been over there and, and looked them over several hours.
The big lake that's right on the north side of Stillwater?
Carl Blackwell.
Pardon me?
Carl Blackwell?
No.
McMurtry?
Right, right as you come into Stillwater.
Boomer, Boomer Lake?
Boomer Lake. Is that the primary reservoir?
No, that's their cooling water for their power generation.
Call is their?
Call doesn't pump into that?
No, I don't think so. It's, they're true.
Call is their source, sir.
Pardon me?
Call Lake is their, is Stillwater.
I understand that.
Hey Lou?
That's a huge lake. Boomer Lake is a huge lake.
How far north is our water treatment plant?
It's about six, about eight miles north of Stillwater, out of, out of 73.
Okay.
73 or 77?
77.
77.
177.
So that's almost where the pump pack is.
So everything south of there is potable water?
Yes.
Okay. Any others?
You know, to me, they would be a valuable source and not have to reinvent the wheel.
And we have looked at what they've done and we've looked at the way they're treating it. We've taken and, and really leveraged some of the things that they have done and their lessons learned.
That's one of the reasons why we went out there was to look and see what they've got on their historical data and to learn from what they've already done.
And, and to see what the lake has done over a very long period of time.
Which lake?
Uh, Call Lake, water quality. Okay? So now Maroli has went through the demand projections and he's going to present what he's found.
Thank you, Mayor. This is the slide you have just seen and the water, water demand curves are from high, medium and low. Next slide shows the population demand projections. This is from the Commerce Department projection. That's what we use in the water, water master plan. From 2050, it's about, we are going to take the water to the entire Garfield County. It's about 65,000 population. Currently, it's about, about 58,000 population for the entire county. That's where the population projection we are going to use for the new project.
So the assumption is that they won't be on rural water supply or that the rural water supply will be drawn from us to the whole county?
Yeah. And this is the average demand, average consumption for the city of Enid for the 20-year period. As you can see, we are almost close to between nine and 10 million gallons per day. And 2011, that's where we'll see like about 13 million gallons per day on the average for the whole year. And still we are within like 10 million gallons per day currently like last year. If we drill down last two years, so this is the city consumption on a day-to-day basis from eight million gallons, eight to 14, but on average 10. This is in the summer months and in the winter months, we are around seven to eight million gallons a day. This is for the city. So if you just take the, the major industrial user, this is what their consumption on a daily basis. So they're, they use a lot in previous years and they are winding down their potable use. They are taking more on the gray water uses. Right here, they are like almost 1 million gallons there presently.
What would cause a $4 million spike in one short period of time? Over to the right, right there.
Uh, that's?
That was a water break.
Water, yeah. Sorry?
That's also when we had a water break.
Okay. That's a huge increase in a short period of time.
That's the difference between the city and the major industrial user. So you can see average 7 million gallons we use on a day-to-day basis. If I take that and project that 7 million gallons right here in the population and in this curve, the green line is the new projection, water projection demands. So green line, this line has the population growth plus 2 million gallons for the new unallocated water and a million gallons for the major industrial. So that's basically right here.
Why does your curve not have that situation that the blue curve does? Are we not projecting that to occur ever or?
No, this is like happened already right here, so in the past. So when, when, when I use the actual demand, demand, actual demands, they used more water in 2011.
Right, but aren't we projecting them to hit that point at some point in the future? I mean, are we still expecting them to reduce to that level of?
We've already calculated in what they've taken off, what we can provide. And the biggest difference between that is when they made their original, when Guernsey made the original projection, they were projecting that we would produce eight to 10 million MGD, million gallons a day average out of our water treatment plant. Well, we don't produce that much. We produce four to five. So they can't get all the way to zero.
Okay, gotcha.
And, and understand that was a projection based on back in 2010 on what we thought was going to happen on the industrial side.
Chris, say that again, I did not get that.
If you look at this, what the question is, what is this? Here? And how come that doesn't show up and are we projecting that? That's really the question. That was a projection back in 2010 when Guernsey did this study for us. But that was going to happen when that user went on to, started to use our gray water, our reuse. And at that time, we were projecting eight to 10 million or, yeah, roughly eight million gallons of, of reuse water available to them, which would meet all of their demands, short of what they have to do for office space.
Reused and gray water?
Yes, sir. Turns out with the improvements we've made in our collection system on our sanitary sewer side, unless we have a significant rain event, we only produce four to five million gallons a day. And that's an average. They need more in the summertime, so that's why you see all those spikes in there, less in the wintertime. That's not going to happen. We don't foresee that happening.
But it also gives us the benefit of not the, the steep production in income from water sales that we were hoping to absorb at some point, or having to absorb at some point. I mean, we get, we will be selling more water this way.
Oh, yes.
For that, okay.
And as Maroli said, his projection line has a million gallons a day for that and 2 million gallons over 50 years for industrial growth, plus in population.
Plus the commerce projection?
Yes.
Okay.
What happens if we have some industry come in that needs a huge amount of water?
We will ramp up the program for bringing more water. That's what we will do. Is your last slide?
From an engineering standpoint.
Okay. Now, here's the information that we take forward and when we work with, with Michael, we are going to phase to somewhere in this neighborhood, right here, this green line, that capability. So you phase into that capability. You still have the design hooks in the system. You still have the additional pumps, additional water tanks that you, we can put in, booster pump station pumps to drive this closer to this line. So we've not done anything to preclude that in our design and in the way we construct it. But we construct it down here somewhere to get that initial capital cost as low as possible.
You mentioned that OWRB would be doing at some point, or somebody was going to be, at some point reevaluating the water table number. What, what was that?
Okay. The Water Resource Board is in the process of doing an analysis on the Cimarron Terrace aquifer. The purpose of that analysis is to calculate what the sustainable yield is for that aquifer and to establish an equal proportional share. So like the Enid isolated, which has a point five, yeah, point five acre feet per, per user or per acre, per year is the sustainable yield and that's your proportional share, that's all you can have. Currently, since that aquifer is not studied, it's two acre feet. And so that information will come out later either this year or early next calendar year.
Will that be retroactive to all permitted users?
It will, yes.
Okay.
Yeah. The only, the only difference to that would be they handle, what do they call those?
Prior rights?
Prior rights.
Okay.
Prior rights users have a little bit more latitude on it.
Gotcha. And then farmers are still unmetered anyway?
Yes, sir. But they have to report.
And they are never inaccurate? Nothing?
So.
And when is that, sorry, I missed it. When was that projected to come out?
They are, they're pretty much done with the analysis right now.
Okay.
Last I heard. So it'll be a couple of months before they're ready to publish that report.
That'll be interesting.
And then there's enactment, which will take a little bit longer. So.
Let us know when that comes out, that'll be interesting.
Oh, we will. Uh, anybody else have any other questions? Yes, sir.
Have we seen with more water wells put in by consumers? I know that's a positive on water usage. Has there been a study? Done how much water we have saved by residents putting in more water wells?
Not that I'm aware of. Not that I'm aware of.
Because you know, a lot of water's been used watered grass.
Yes.
Then there's people taking baths and washing clothes. So I was wondering if we have more, is there like a promotion for water wells being put in?
Not that I'm aware of.
I believe it'd be helpful, but I'm just wondering.
I'd be willing to talk about it offline, but as far as I know, there's nothing to know. I'm not aware of anything that the city's doing to promote that.
Well, the city still in actually Phase One of water conservation. And we've, from time to time, put out information on that. I don't know when the last time we put something out, but we put on the back of the bill. We remind people, we may not have done that this season. So Steve, put that on your list.
Social media last week.
Okay, social media last week. Uh, what that means is people that water with an automated sprinkler system are supposed to use the odd even system. So that should be going on. Hopefully it is going on. It hasn't been as much of a concern since we've been two years out of the drought. But as anybody in the water business will tell you, the new drought may have started today or may start tomorrow. We just don't know it. So to answer your question as best I can, we, we have tried to keep people educated. It's hard to do when it's raining a lot and so we're doing the best we can. I don't, I could, I don't know if we could really tell you the impact on, on water wells. We don't have, I don't think we have access to data on how many there are in town. I don't know that it's had a significant impact. Maroli showed you what our historical data has been, so we could probably go back and look at that. It didn't appear to me that, what was the average again? Eight, eight million in the? We could look at that chart and you could probably tell there's probably back to, well, that's only two years of data. Well, there's a whole bunch of data. So really, it doesn't appear, there's probably more wells now than there maybe were back in 1998 and our consumption's going up, so.
Was that your question?
Yes, sir.
When a well is put in permits are, or there are permits issued when wells are put in?
We don't, the code department? No, don't code.
Okay. Because I was thinking if we have permits, once we would kind of check it out, permits.
The only time we would permit is if they're, they're wanting to do it on the roadway and then we really don't give them a permit. But they do have to give a permit through, for non-domestic through DEQ and OWRB. Any other questions?
Thank you, Chris.
I'd forward, discuss the CDBG funding process.
Yeah, hey, I'll do a brief introduction and Stephanie's going to walk us through this and what we've done. Several of you mentioned to us during the budget time, talking about CDBG that you wanted to look at some programs. Kind of like we sort of used to. And I think, I think several of you, Commissioner Waddell, I think maybe you did, Mr. Norwood. I know, Mr. Wilson, you talked about the, you gave an update on the history of how we've done things. So this is an opportunity, we're, we're certainly open to, to do what you want to do with these funds. And I believe we have some money available that we've talked about. We have the possibility of sending it out in RFP. We need to craft that RFP to make sure we capture your intent for what you want in this program. And that's what Stephanie's going to talk us through and talk us how that would work and how we would go through finalizing the process, how you would select who the recipients are and as needed, you know, talk about some history because this is somewhat similar to how we used to do it, except that the separate funding committee, you are the funding committee now and you are as commissioners. So thank you, Stephanie.
Evening, Mayor Commissioners. The HUD requirement, basically my job is to make sure that we do everything legally and within the parameters of the, the grant. So the fine details, that is up to you as the funding committee and commissioners to decide that. But the main thing is the national objective is it has to benefit low to moderate income individuals. And it must align with the five-year consolidated plan priorities. Those priorities are listed and they'll be on one of these slides. We must have at least two public hearings. One at the beginning, we've already had that public hearing. The second one needs to have the activities that you plan to utilize during the, the year. And the amount of the allocation has to be, usually this process is done in April and it's finalized in May. But since we don't have budget numbers yet, we can't have our second public hearing, which is great since we're changing and adding an after-school program possibly.
So just to clarify, HUD has us on hold right now pending the final, whatever our budget number's going to be, right?
Yes, yes. I'm anticipating a 10% decrease, but it could be more than that.
What is it today, Stephanie?
Uh, 390, 399?
389 or something.
389, 390. We have to list the range of activities and then hear public comments. Sometimes we don't hear any comments, other times we hear, I think this is what we should do by the community. But most of the time, those public, public comments come directly to you via email or a citizen will call you or.
Yes, they do.
The application process, we need to determine eligibility first off. So it may sound good when they're discussing it, but they would need to fill out the application. That'll help me determine if they actually are eligible. And then we'll do the rank and rate process and that's something that you guys will be a part of. I'll present those eligible activities to you. I'm anticipating July 18th study session. And, and then you'll approve the final action plan with all of those projects or one or two or however many you choose in August. And public services, which after-school program would be considered a public service because it's not a works and mortar project. So those are always capped at 15% of your total grant. The housing and homeless prevention projects, they don't have a cap and they're high priority. The RFP for the after-school youth program, I'm thinking that it will be an application due date 30 days from the date we've published the RFP. July 18th, staff presents a study session. July 18th, conduct the second public. July eighteenth, conduct the second public hearing in the regular commission meeting. August first, staff presents the final action plan at the regular meeting. And August fifteenth, award contracts. And then throughout the year, we'll monitor those programs. I get every document that, that they submit, but we can also do site visits with you guys with the plan, those, maybe one or two. The City of Enid priorities in the five-year consolidated plan, housing and homeless prevention, emergency repairs, that's what CDSA does for us. That's a high priority. Infrastructure improvements, public facility improvements, lake parks. Transportation is a high priority. Neighborhood centers, youth programs, those are also high priorities.
Section one oh eight, the loan?
Yeah. Yes.
And that goes for how many more years?
Two.
Is it two?
Twenty nineteen we'll pay it off. Okay, the timeline and the funding cycle, we do the five-year consolidated plan. That was done. We're working, this'll be our fifth year, so we will start a new, new one this upcoming year. We'll do the RFP and application process. The action plan is, is the actual great application to HUD. And then, like I said, the contracts will be executed, and there we'll put in all the rules and regulations on the federal side, and any rules and regulations you guys would like to see to, to maintain program, that, those programs. And then, um, we'll do the CAPER, and that's, that's just a accomplishment report that we send to HUD, and it talks, it compares the action plan to what we've done. So, if we said we were going to do twenty-five emergency repairs and we only did five, then they'll ask why so little? Could be, you know, just the cost of things have gone up in a year, but that just explains to the community why and what we did the previous year.
Is at any, any point during the year, do we, uh, get a, get a report back of what was accomplished with these as, as far as after the projections, after the things were forecasted? Okay, what was actually accomplished as opposed to what was forecasted?
Actually, um, I get the reports from them. I've never came to the commission to report that. I'd be happy to do that. We do, um, I do a quarterly report into IDIS, which is the system that I communicate with HUD, and I put all that data in there. So, monthly, each organization sends me their accomplishments, and I put it there. So, yeah, if you ever need or want me to come do a study session, report on that, I could definitely do that.
I mean, uh, yeah, like overview information, how many are...
Really, just like a, you know, some type of, you know, summary would be great.
Okay.
How many after-school programs do we have in the city now?
I'm just, I'm gonna guess. I know that like the YMCA has an after-school program. Booker T. Washington has one. Anybody else think, thinking of any?
There's a daycare place over in Southern Heights called Sand Ridge or Sandbox.
Sandbox.
Sandbox, do they have one?
Um, I don't think... I think it's more of the, a daycare, not a...
Yeah, it's more of a daycare. And the ones that we have are pretty well saturated, and they reach a pretty small group of people.
Saturation of students?
Yeah. And they, they, like I said, they reach a pretty small...
Oh, Zoe Bible Church has one too.
They reach a pretty small group of folks.
Zoe Bible Church.
Okay, I know the one you're talking about.
We don't have any like Big Brothers, Big Sisters programs or any kind of Boys and Girls Clubs or anything. We don't have any kind of like, what I would consider like a regular city or school system after-school program. We have a few private places that do some small ones, but...
What do we do during the summer?
Um, I think what this program, what we want to do is start doing it a year round, an after-school and a summer program, is we do need to keep the children off the street. They'll find fun things to do like graffiti and...
Will the forty thousand dollars cover twelve months or nine months?
No.
No, but it'll be...
Then you're gonna have to add ten thousand dollars to it.
Oh, yeah.
Which is...
They could serve more if we would give the...
Three months would be a fourth of it.
Yes.
I'm aware that Booker T. has eighty children. There's eighty.
And the Y probably has quite a bit more than that, but...
Yeah, a little bit over a hundred.
Stephanie, can you go, one of the things that we really need to get your input from to finish this RFP and send it out is talk about what is the scope of the program, what is that you want? I think you have a section about here.
Yes.
Dana, could, if you could help Dana pull that up, and we could make sure we're capturing what the commission would like us to proceed with.
Well, that's what I was kind of concerned, are, are we talking about developing new programs? Are we talking about providing more support to existing programs?
Yes. I believe that's what we're going for, is somebody who already has a program going that maybe they've even shut it down. I know Booker T. does not have a summer program currently due to lack of funding is what my understanding is.
I don't think that's what we were doing.
Yeah, I'd, I'd like to leave the possibility open for both, and here's why. As it stands right now, if you look at where the Y's located and you look at where Booker T. is located, they're both, they're not far from one another. And so, you have a very large segment of the community that is not served by, by a community-based program like that. So, with, uh, you know, a supplement, and I, I'd like it to be a supplement, because again, we're not going to have any substantial program that's going to be run on fifty thousand dollars. But what this does is, is somebody can use that to couple with a program that they're already doing or they're looking to develop, and we can have something that's on the, on the south side or the north, you know, or, or on the west side, or even deeper into the east side of the community to where we can have multiple places where, where, where children can go. To get to what, what you're talking about as far as criteria, it needs to be, for, for me, what I'm looking for is something that has some, uh, uh, educational base. I'm not looking for a start a daycare center. We've got lots of daycare centers. But we don't have anything that has, that's mentor, um, education-based, uh, to where there's, there's a connection with the kids in the community and the folks who serve that community. That's what we, that's what, what my thought process is, was, is for, as far as doing this. And as it stands, like I said, we've got the Y, and we've got Booker T., which are, you know, uh, good programs, and they serve, you know, like I said, their immediate surroundings that are there, and those who can afford to get a Y membership to do it. As it stands right now, we have a large segment of the community that does not have access to either one of those facilities, and we're missing it. So, I'd like the, the city to have a vested interest in whatever pro, this, this program that this is for. And this is a way, whether, we're not going to be able to establish an entire program with, you know, forty, fifty thousand dollars, but we can definitely incentivize somebody else to say, hey, look, I don't have all of that, but that's going to help, help me to be able to develop a little bit more, or, or to put something together, or encourage some of these other programs to expand, to, to encourage more folks to be able to come in and make it available to more, more of the community.
What age group, do, do we have the age group on there, Stephanie? I thought we did somewhere. Is it four to eighteen?
Dana, we put the RFP instead of this one.
I thought that was the RFP.
That's the application.
It says four to eighteen years of age.
We need to narrow that.
I agree.
Yeah, so that's what we need guidance on.
What, what age group are...
Those kind of things, yeah.
I, I put in the RFP just because it's a draft document. I put four to seventeen, but that's for you to determine. I mean, four's kind of young. Gerald pointed that out, but...
Well, we're just, this was a, this was an effort to get started. We gotta have your input to get it.
When we talked about doing an after-school or out-of-school program before, when I met with the police chief and Main Street and several different community people got together to talk about doing an out-of-school program, at the time, we had absolutely no funding or means to do it, but we all sat down and talked about what we would like to see happen or how it would work or whatever. And we kind of agreed on sixth grade through about fifteen or sixteen, because once they turn sixteen and they start driving, it becomes less of a problem, but it's those middle, it's that middle group of kids, because the young kids have daycare and are with their moms and dads and family members, and they're mostly overseen already. There's that chunk of kids about sixth grade through probably ninth or tenth grade that don't have the same kind of supervision or transportation, so those are the kids that are getting missed in the community, and that's according to like the police department mostly. So, that was kind of the age group we were talking about that, in our community, that needs the service the most.
And if that's, if that's the biggest, um, area that we, that is not served right now, maybe that's the place we start, and as you give more money, you expand.
In both directions from that, but let's find out where the sweet spot is now and try and get it.
So, it's, yeah, it's the middle school, it's kind of right around sixth grade, about middle school, I guess, starts in sixth grade now, so about middle school up through maybe sophomore, ninth grade or tenth grade maybe.
Six to nine.
Yeah, probably, because you, once they turn sixteen and they have jobs and cars, it becomes less of a problem. But it's the, it's those middle kids. Well, right. But, but it's those middle kids that aren't as supervised all the time and don't have those kind of activities that are, is where we're missing, is where we're missing getting, getting those kids.
In, in past years, when we had these type of programs, it was always done through the schools too. We involved the school system in the, in the process. I can remember back when I was young, which you can tell was a hell of a long time ago. They had the, you know, they, they did open the schools during the summertime and had programs there for children where you could go in and work in the woodworking shop, or they had classrooms where they'd have tutoring classes and things like that, and they did that, you know, for just about every summer. But it was, it was a coordinated program through the school system and use their, their facilities. And I don't know, somehow or other, I guess just through the years, it just kind of piddled away.
We talked about that, this, well, whenever I had the meeting that we had, that I had, was when Sean Heim was still here, so of course, that's changed now, so I don't know what, I don't know what this administration's feelings are, are, but at the time when we had our meeting, the school system was very interested in being a part of this whole thing. So, I think it is something we need to talk to them about partnering on. Also, the budget, the school, as everybody in the world knows, our school budget system is not in such great shape, so it may have changed quite a bit, you know, how they, how they receive that at this point, because it's going to take obviously money. But, um, when we talked before, they were open to being a part of it.
Would that be an advantage to have it in the school system? We only have three middle schools.
Well, I mean, when...
That covers the entire city.
Yeah, and I don't, I mean, I don't, I can't, I can't speak for the school system because like I said, the administration's changed, the budget, you know, issues have changed. I don't know what their outlook on it is now. When we talked about it before, we talked about the possibility of using their spaces because they are spread out throughout the community and everybody has access to a school. We talked about, um, perhaps using their, their transportation, um, because they're going to be transporting kids after school anyway, so we kind of talked about some of that, and those were things at the time that they were open to, and I don't know where they stand on that now. That's something we'd have to readdress with them.
Well, they've, with this age group, shifted towards getting the kids out of school earlier. I mean, that's been their focus, is cutting costs by...
Right.
By encouraging kids to not take that elective, not take that additional class, and not for nothing, but forty thousand dollars is a drop in the bucket for the cost of this. I mean, I'm not, I think these are all great ideas. I, I, I can't imagine what, what kind of program forty thousand dollars will get started with. Just the cost is going to be monumental if we want to do something that'll have a big impact. I mean, I'm interested in seeing what proposals come back, and part of my concern is that if, if we too narrowly define the RFP, we won't get anybody interested. Because it will take a special circumstance for anyone to be able to put this together.
I don't think we've already got people interested.
Yeah. I hope that's right. But, you know, there's a big different gap between someone being interested and somebody producing a responsive RF, you know, response. I mean, it's, yeah, I'd love to do it, but can you meet, you know, this A, B, C requirement? I mean, you know, the, for anyone to do anything with the city, there's kind of a baseline set of requirements, you know, insurance liability issues, you know, what, all kinds of stuff that any entity would, would have to. And so, I'm, I'm concerned that the gap between, oh, we all agree this should be done, and, and, oh, we can actually afford to make this happen, that forty thousand dollars is going to be inadequate, but...
Well, that forty thousand can increase to two hundred thousand in two years, so if you get something going now.
Well, that's if CDBG exists in two years.
Pardon me?
That's if CDBG exists in two years.
That's true.
Well, and also, part of that...
If, if it doesn't exist, it doesn't exist. We've got a bigger problem.
Part of our original discussions involved Main Street, and from kind of that, we came up with kind of a prototype or an idea for what a teen center could be, could look like, and Kelly could probably talk more about that. I don't want to put you on the spot if you don't want to talk about it, but she, we, we entered that idea into the Creative Communities, um, program, which we got, kind of got started on, and it's, it's been a little bit derailed, but it's kind of evolving to something else. And do you want to talk about that some, Kelly?
Do you like it?
I mean, do you care if she talks about that?
No.
Because I kind of feel, because why I bring this up is because I, there are other factions of the city that are working on some of these kind of similar programs, and if everybody's doing a small program on their own, it seems silly to me that we don't all merge them together and use the, more resources.
And that, that, that also, based on the criteria that we set, also opens us up to other types of federal grants in order to be able to fund the program.
Right.
It's not just CDBG. We've got, if, if we have technology-based, if we have agricultural-based, this is, all opens us up for grants in order to be able to expand the program.
If, if by chance, Main Street were involved, that would, that's more of a...
Exactly.
Um, what part should I start? Because this has gone, this has been a conversation for over several years, and it is, it has morphed and it has come, it's coming together from different sizes and different angles.
Well, you have nine minutes.
All right, I'll take three and a half. So, um, like Tammy said, we talked several years ago about this teen center idea. I created a website as if it exists to communicate the idea of having a space where, where a safe space teens can go and with, with things that they can learn from, maybe, maybe there are guitars there that they can learn how to play, or sewing machine to learn how to make things, and art. This has kind of morphed over the time, but anyways, it's been a discussion over time. Then with the Creative Communities, uh, project, we did submit that idea. It has, it has morphed, and now we're going towards something that, that is such, it was such a huge project that I couldn't put my whole self into it because I already have, um, Main Street to take care of. Couldn't put my whole self into it, and a few other people, uh, dropped off. So, we lightened the project to more of, I don't, it doesn't have a name yet, but a internship slash apprenticeship, a way for teens to learn soft skills and customer service, skills, things that they don't learn in school, but that our employers need to bridge a gap between, uh, or to make our teens more hirable once they do turn sixteen, and using a, um, a digital badge system to show the skills that they have learned, that they have proven that they've learned. Then another angle of this is, um, this, the whole maker space idea, which merges with a teen program idea, where they have tools to be able to create things in the, in a miniature wood shop, or maybe a metal. And they learn about how circuits work and how electricity works with all these different techni, they learn how to code. All these ways that they learn how to play, hands-on, you know, we don't, we don't play with things anymore, we don't build as much with blocks, and we don't learn by trial and error and taking things apart and trying to put them back together and creating new things out of them. That's what, that's what we used to do, but now our time and our, the playtime is very scheduled. There's just so much less of that. Technological employees, they need, they need people who know how to think and solve problems creatively, and this kind of play and this kind of discovery is what, is what they learn. They learn those skills from these type of maker spaces, what they have. So, merging a, whether it's a maker space with a, a teen center are discussions that have been, uh, floating around. Then because of these different projects, uh, in different directions, I talked with Megan from Opel, O-P-E-L is the Oklahoma Partnership for Expanded Learning. They help people create quality after-school, or out-of-school programs, whether that is after-school in the summer, or some schools who have only gone to Monday through Thursday, then it's, you know, for Fridays. So, there are a lot of resources out there that can help connect us with us, can help connect, whoever's going to do this, uh, with, with information and resources and direction, so the wheel doesn't have to be completely reinvented, it can just be modified to fit our community. I just went on and on. What was the question?
Do you have any location in mind when you were talking about this?
Downtown. Well, I would love to have it downtown, but that's, of course, that's where my... Well, I would love to have it downtown, but that's, of course, that's where my mind is.
I know, but is there, is there some space down there?
There's not a space that, um, I have a few in my mind, but without talking to property owners, I wouldn't say on camera.
And then also then about, like, you guys just got the grant for the Maker Trail, or the...
Yeah, we were just one of 10 communities chosen across the nation to create a Maker Trail. So what we are going to do here in the next few months is, uh, we're gonna have maker stations around First Friday, around downtown, so that you go from one station to the next and you learn and you build and you do these things. It's almost just, it's an open-air event type of...
Maker space.
Maker space, it's just not in a location, it's in multiple locations so that people go around and enjoy things more and interact with more people.
Which, well, I'll take, I'm sorry, Dana. Which then that would educate the public on kind of what we're gearing towards, what our idea was. But why I brought Kelly, why I told her, why I asked her if she would, if she would speak about it is because I think a lot of these things could merge together and we could benefit from the resources that she knows about and some of the ideas that have already kind of been put together, rather than everybody trying to go different directions. It makes more sense.
What do you have in this, the other day?
We're gonna do, the Maker Trail is going to start a light version during September 1st Friday and we're going to do the, we're gonna do it for real during October 1st Friday.
Any other questions?
Okay, sorry. And you know, I think Booker T. Washington, you know, they have a facility, they have volunteers, they have a lot of things and that may be, you know, something that everybody comes to the table, has a round table with Main Street, Booker T., anybody else who's interested in figure out, let's all do it together instead of one person getting...
Yeah. Well, I think, I hear, what I hear, what I'm getting out of this is we've kind of narrowed down what we think the age groups are, basically middle school, sixth to ninth grader types, focused on educational stuff or maker stuff, which is educational stuff. So I like the idea of what you mentioned about, I have not approached the schools or the VOTEC, but this sounds like, gosh, I'd love to just volunteer Brady McCullough right now when he's not here. This sounds like a VOTEC. There's a component of that to it. Now, I know that's not exactly what we're talking about, but we're talking about doing things and that's exactly what they do. So if there was some way we could help them and other people could help them, I like the idea of combining resources too, so...
And I didn't mean to usurp anybody's discussion that you were gonna have. I just wanted to make sure we got all the resources on the table so everybody's aware what, what we have available. Because the Maker Trail thing just happened, like that completely unexpectedly just literally, literally just happened, like in the last couple of days. So that's a, a new thing that we didn't have before, since we even just since last week.
We will keep working on it and we will, uh, we may wanna come back to you one more time to make sure we've captured it right before we send it out. And then ultimately, these groups, whoever they are, are gonna come to you guys, so... And we can work through it, so that's, that's...
In the RFP, should we schedule a time to have a stakeholders' meeting? Just so you guys can be there and everybody who applied is all in the same room at the exact same time?
I think it'd be worthwhile to, to get all vested interest and anybody who had, you know, has a heart for this can get into a room and, and, you know, and speak to, you know, what they're willing to contribute and what their, you know, what their stake is in it and...
Because that's gonna determine a lot.
It is, it, we'll, we'll, we'll have a good idea at that point as far as what this potentially can look like, uh, going forward. Um, and until we get to that point, we've just got a lot of, you know, mice running all over the place and we don't know what we're really looking at, so, um, so I think that would be worthwhile to do.
Okay.
Stephanie, one question.
Yes.
On the emergency repairs, what are they? Uh, on, you had a slide up on the budget for CDBG?
Yes.
Emergency repairs?
Are you asking how much?
I seen the, the amount of money.
Okay.
Part of that, but what does that entail?
Emergency repairs or anything that would cause somebody to be homeless. Most people won't go live in the streets, they'll go ahead and live in backed-up sewage or, um, no hot water, things like that.
Roof leaking, we do emergency roof repairs, electrical work. Typically, CDSA manages all that, uh, and they send us a monthly bill, I think, that runs through your office to approve based on the funding. And they, they pay directly the contractors, I guess, to go and do the work and seek reimbursement from the city. So it's anything having to do with making people not homeless, leaving their house?
Okay, so with CDSA, we already have something that's really established.
We certainly do on emergency repairs and that area. CDSA would probably wanna be part of the conversation as well, I would say, I mean, I can speak for them.
Maybe we can get with them and discuss that.
Sorry.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
There was another program, um, called Christmas in Ap- April that was changed to Christmas in Action. And then they, um, moved all of their stuff to CDSA instead of doing the same thing they just said.
And apart, I think CDSA has resources in-house that they can use.
Like grant writing and all those different...
Yeah, well, also they have, they have staff that goes out and makes some of these repairs. I mean, it's not all, um, you know, farmed-out contractors, they have folks on staff so they can try to keep costs low.
Anyone else? Stephanie, have you anything else?
Um, I believe that's it. I already did the RFP and put the stakeholder meeting date in there. Kristen will be probably calling you off and schedule, um, a meeting time that I can put into the RFP.
Summer will be a half over for the students.
Well, it isn't gonna be this year.
In July.
Hopefully, we can start it for the after-school and be ready.
It's long-term.
And I think I have a folder of stuff for you, I haven't located it yet.
Where's this, where it houses gonna be advertised?
Enid News and Eagle. There is another one, Alyssa, maybe you can help me out on the name of it that we...
With our website.
We also put it on our website, social media, other organizations can...
I'll post it at the library and, um, Booker T., different organizations, and I'll, I'll do mail out.
That'd be great. Our, our reception's only gonna be as good as how many people we can contact, so...
And if there's anybody on the list that you would like to add that I may not know about, please send me their information.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We are adjourned, I'll meet upstairs at 6:30. Thank you for joining us for the Enid City Commission Study Session. If you have any questions or comments, visit our website at enid.org.